Okay. All right, we're gonna open the zoning bylaw additions, corrections. So, I need a motion, the second.
Make a motion to open the meeting, Harry?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. The first one I'm gonna take up is the definitions. Basically, Sam Jocelyn, the building inspector, came up with these. Most of them follow the building code so that the bylaw, whatever is stated in the bylaw agrees with the building code because when he writes up his decisions, he's gonna use building code language at that point. We did some of that last year when we passed the new bylaw. Any questions? Okay. This will run until 7:30. At 7:30, we have to break into a planned, scheduled planning board hearing. We may continue this tonight if there gets to be too many questions. If not, you know, we will be continuing the next meeting of this. It will be on February 6th, which is another planning board meeting, but it's also one of our business meetings instead of, we won't have any, you know, developers coming in or anything, so we should have a lot more time at that point. The second one coming up is rezoning Estee Park, Parker Fence. This is something in a conversation I had after one of the zoning board of appeals meetings with town council. Outside of this room and everything, in the hall. His thing was, we ought to be doing something. We had tried to rezone over at Estee's lumberyard years ago, business, and versus the residential zone it's in. And that failed, town meeting. So, it's kind of a two-fold thing. It's to try to get it out of, you know, the lawsuits that we were getting into, but to give it some structure. And all we're doing at this point this year is, we would show it on a zoning map, and also, the second part of the article basically explains where point this to point that goes. It also includes Estee Park, it is now known as, and Parker Fence across the street. And not all of Parker Fence, because a lot of that is in a wetland now, so... Any questions relative to that at this point?
Can you make a comment?
Mm-hmm.
For the record, my name's Laurie Ogden, I represent Estee Park. I'd like to thank you for putting this on the agenda. We would, I know you're busy tonight, you told me. I've worked with Jim the last few months somewhat on this, so if we could, we'd like to come back to your next meeting and maybe schedule another half an hour or so. We submitted the, sometime in the middle of last week, a proposal that goes a little bit beyond what Jim had. It defines some other definitions, uses, what zone it may go in, and things like that. So, if it's okay, if you would like to schedule to come back.
You can come back. I mean, I'm gonna take it, you know, under advisement because we have other things we do have to do, all right? One of the problems with our business zones, when we mention them in the bylaw, there's still four, there's four sections, this would be the fourth section, but they're not broken up on the ma, they're not broken, they're broken up on the map, but what we really need to do with them is to make them into like, similar to the residential, B1, B2, B3, B4. Estee Park would end up being B4. Why would you do that? Because some of them, there are problems with off-street parking, parking in the area, small lots, others have bigger lots, more par, off-street parking. You can tailor those to different uses. Right now, when you look at the business zones in a town, they're kind of tailored to the lower end at best. That will expand for each one of these things. Some will stay the same, they're gonna have to. They just can't accommodate certain things. But getting to that, because we, I wanted to get this thing finished by the end of the year, believe me. Last year, we ran it quite late, and it was a rush to get it done at that point. So, you know, I have founds in the bylaw, a few typos here and there. That probably happened because of that. But, you know, this year, I wanna be on top of this, so when I came in and I presented this thing, we'd been pretty much there. The unfortunate problem is, I found some more typos along the way, made some notes to myself. You guys didn't get this. But, I figured out what we gotta do, and some of the articles are gonna be about three different things in one article. We're going in there at this point, it looks like, with five articles. And everything has to pass relative to a section in its entirety, or it doesn't work. We did that years ago, back in the 70s, and we had a terrible time because the one part failed, so we have to do it that way. The unfortunate problem is, it can draw a lot of questions at that point, what are you doing? And because a lot of times, most people aren't that familiar with zoning articles, and they're not touched by them until something goes wrong, or they're trying to do something. So, we want, we wanna make it as clear as possible, that's all I can tell you.
Well, we attempted to put together something fairly comprehensive, so if we can have the opportunity to come in on the 6th...
That's fine, I, this thing will keep rolling until...
Right, I understand, yeah.
Like, we just did the definitions, my feeling is, nobody's saying any, anything to it. We'll bring it up again next, next month.
Okay.
But the reality is, once I hear it the second time around and nobody says anything about it, I wanna write that article. I wanna get it into Denise, so it's gonna be ready for typeset, you know, into the annual town meeting. We had asked the Board of Selectmen that if there were special town meetings, could we do some lesser articles at the special town meetings? And we didn't get a yes or a no, it's just simply, they aren't holding any. They seem to wanna go to that one special town meeting before the annual town meeting, and that's it. So, it's not gonna work for us at that point. All I can do is, I can assure you that we will go to work on this thing, splitting up the zones, and then having the discussion on what would go into those four zones. We will be doing that, that's not gonna stop. Once you start this thing, it's gonna go, that's it.
I understand.
Okay.
We'll come in and present what we, did everybody get a copy of what we presented?
No, I've got them right here. I had one going around there for a while, so...
I think I gave you five, so...
Yeah.
I won't, we won't take up any more of your time, so...
You can pass them down, okay, I'll keep going. Okay. Third one is accessory apartments, which has kind of been a bugaboo for the zoning board for quite a while now. And it was, I would say it was probably one of the harder ones to work on, but we got through it. And... Basically, they will be 900 square feet, I think we had a thing in there, in the old law, it was 25% more and everything. We only did one over the years that I knew of, where one guy had a 3,600 square foot house, and 25% was gonna be, it was the combination of the two houses. He had a house, garages, and another house he built for his father on a lot, and they were all connected. And then the new house was 1,200 square feet for 4,800 square foot, feet, land of the house, and 25% of that was 1,200 square feet. But most of them, you know, did, never came above the 900. So, what we are gonna allow is 10%, and I have to check with zoning board members and everything, it's, because we, we do... The accessory unit and the primary unit, and the question that I have is, is it off the accessory unit, 10%? Casey, do you remember that one?
My reading of it is that it would allow up to 10% over the 900 square feet.
Okay. So, if I insert the words in the fourth line, after the word "the," accessory unit habitable area, then that would read right?
Is this, does this incorporate exams to last comments from the other day?
We, I made a change in it because I've sent something, this is at the end, and I'll explain what we did, okay? Yeah, we took out, we took out what Mitch came up with at the end, okay? Then, what we did, we had a discussion on the planning board one night, and Lisa took a look at it, and her whole thing was, put a period at the word, end of the word, continue.
That I want to force back?
Yes. And that, that means anything that came before is history. They, they're allowed to go on.
But that would, just I don't know if somebody's picking up, but that would allow any accessory in-law apartment, permitted or not permitted, to continue?
Correct.
And that's what you wanna do? You wanna grandfather in, do whatever?
I, you know, in looking at this, having listened to what Lisa said, it struck me, you know, do this. Why? I would like to keep this town out of lawsuits.
That's great, but then how, I mean, how would you accept proof of it exists with some illegal apartment?
So, that's the problem, so when they're illegal, you don't find out until someone goes to sell it anyway, so that's when you're gonna catch it regardless.
Right, so...
They're not all of a sudden gonna stop using it when it was illegal because we enacted a new bylaw that said...
But in five years, when this has been in place for five years, say, and somebody creates an illegal apartment next year after this has been in place, how do we know, without them having to show that it was properly permitted in the past, how do we know whether that was pre this bylaw or post this bylaw?
Well, because it's still gonna be illegal one way or the other, and you're still gonna catch it when they go to sell it or do whatever.
If this would make it legal if it was...
It's only gonna be legal to continue using it until they give up the right to be using, like, you're not gonna find, you're gonna find illegal apartments the same way you're gonna find them today, tomorrow, 10 years from now. If someone either calls the cops because they say, hey, my neighbor's building something they're not supposed to do, or someone goes to sell it and they don't have a permit, you're never gonna find it in the interim anyway.
I gotcha.
Well, but that, that means be the case, that's, my concern is just grandfathering in units that were not permitted in the first place, if they're, I mean, it is what it is if they were granted...
Yeah, but how you, how are you gonna find out which units weren't and which units are?
But say somebody comes in and wants, you know, to add on, they're under the 900 square feet, they wanna add on a sunroom, and we need to know whether it was, you know, the current apartment is permitted or not, you know, about legal or not. This bylaw would grandfather any existing permit, uh, apartment to make it legal as of the date the bylaw passes, but how do we know, you know, gr, granting a special permit and awarding it is a fine line, you know, it's a front line.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if somebody comes in for a sunroom, it's gonna be the house, the homeowner, not the apartment owner, or saying that we're gonna put a sunroom on, so, I mean, how, how are you gonna tell them this apartment is illegal and you can't add this sunroom? You know what I mean? It's so, it's so, you're going back so far, you know?
There, there are many different, believe me, there are many different...
That's why I too sent the...
No, I understand, I understand.
Casey, after sitting on a board of appeals for 17 years, and going through six chairman, and I was one of them, I can guarantee you, there were still some one-liners done in the beginning. There were one-liners done, the 60s and the 70s, and the eight, and the 80s, I know there were. The real problem...
But at least you know it was permitted versus somebody who just built something and didn't...
But not as to how, I can guarantee you that one. It's, the, I can, I can draw many different scenarios of how this happened. Sometimes, we might have voted on something, but the chairman signed the decision, put it in the clerk's office. Clerk held it for like 20 days and then told him, come and get it. It never got checked by everybody else that was on the decision, so who knows, quite frankly? You know, is, we had chairman that could do something, I could tell you that, you know, back then, but, you know...
It's a bigger problem beyond this.
Some of the ones that I have noticed more than are over, the garages. There was, there are lots in this town. There, if you read the deed, there are two lots, one D. In 1937, the Commonwealth came out and said, one lot. That's it. So, they lost that other lot, but if you look at some of those lots, you'll see a house, space, a house, but the space, that's that second lot. In the back, there's a garage, with something up, above it, with curtains in the window. You know what it is. When it was built, I can't even tell you. I, you know, it's, I had sent a couple to a lawyer in this town who had one of those, one lot, you know? How's it go? It's, it was two lots, but one D. And she, she told them about the 37 law, which is what I kinda heard a year, a number of years ago. I didn't know it was 1937. If you go into the old part of the town, I think everybody had two lots at once. They sold a second one prior to 1937. But there are some still around.
And if they don't mean zoning, then they would merge, so there would be one lot.
Right.
Regardless of how they're described.
Yeah.
It's a different topic, but I knew...
Yeah. Well, I know, I know these things, you can look at and say, did it ever have a building inspection? What if they scabbed something in?
Yeah.
That, that should get caught, and...
I think the building, our new building inspector is more on top of anything than, I, I am, I'm not...
I totally agree with that.
I'm not denying, I mean, the old building inspector, because my father was one of them, believe me. Exactly, whatever, I don't throw them under the bus, but, I mean, our building, our new building inspector is on top of everything, a lot more than the older ones were.
I agree, and I'm just, my concern is, is legitimize what's happened in the past that wasn't correct.
Yep.
That, that's my concern.
I mean, I mean, how, how are you gonna fix the past, though? You can't fix the past.
They can come in to get it permitted, to get a permanent trauma.
No, it's all done, it's, it's all done, I, what, why are, why are they gonna come in? What are you gonna do to them if it's, they're done?
But I expect Sam would enforce, um...
I mean, if, if they're all done, and they've been living there for 10, 15 years, and you're gonna try to, you're gonna have a lawsuit, you know, that's what, that's...
That would certainly be a lawsuit.
Right, exactly, and that's what Jim's, that's what we're trying to resolve, is not having lawsuits against the town, okay?
Okay, is, is there any more questions relative to the accessory?
Oh, you want, go ahead.
So, I understand we're taking care of a lot of housekeeping, you know, with Sam, and definitions and that, longer we're doing, he's not doing a good job, personally, but as far as rezoning Estee's Parker Fence, and the description of the boundaries, does those boundary change as they exist today?
Do they change?
The boundaries, you know, 600 feet, Wesley Bush and Interstop, are we extending that zone, or are we, are we doing anything differently?
No, basi, basically what it does, it runs Estee Park, the land he owns, the only part it doesn't pick up, he owns six acres across the track. We did not pick that up in this, in this law. We can do that. What we'd like to get from Eric First is a site plan. It doesn't have to be, you know, something that we would use in a hearing right away, but it would show everything that he has planned, or he's thinking of doing before he goes to do it. I, I mean, I think that we need to get into more, more planning down there with the empty lot, and at that point, if he comes up with a good plan with it, and we think, you know, it can work, and it's not gonna bother anybody, I mean, most of what he has down there right now, having been called down there at 6:30 in the morning quite a number of times, and then finding out that the noise that was down there didn't even exist, it was me and Bob O'Nanley went down there many, many times, drove all over the place.
Yeah, can I understand that, Jim?
Okay.
My question is still the same, are we expanding that description of what's existing now? Is that, is that showing getting bigger?
No, it's, it's, it's the old...
Is it staying the same?
It's the, yes, the yard, and it's across the street of Parker Fence, but the drop is only about a hun, if you look at the, the road, it's about 100 feet past the road into Parker Fence. Parker Fence goes a lot deeper, but it comes to a triangle, and it's all went back there, and so, we, they're not gonna be able to...
I think what he's asking is, is within Estee's property lines.
Oh, yes.
And it is.
Yes, yeah, no, it's not going outside.
Okay, so it's not changing, it's not expanding across the whole line?
No.
And I could expand the, the business district or whatever it is in that area?
But it is currently in residential, and it's a proposed change to move it into residential.
Is that true?
Yes, it's not residential.
That's what...
It's all those...
You grandfathered.
Yeah. I mean, right now, he operates a pre-existing non-conformant, which sometimes, the way I've learned that over the years, that's more powerful in a zone. And, you know, if he wants to keep that, he can, he can, he can say, withdraw this thing tomorrow. It's up to him, but I think, you know, I've gone to enough ZBA meetings, not the ones that are going on now, but the ones in, you know, not distant past, but, you know, a few years ago, where they got out of hand, they really did. I mean, if there's a lot of uses he wanted to do, that I, I probably would have passed on those in a second. I wouldn't have had it on my mind. But we have to begin to put that in as uses, but we have to split up the zones, probably. This thing came to an end at the end of the year. I didn't wanna run into what I did last year, I just did not, we were changing this thing right up the town meeting at that point, almost, so... There's a method to my madness, okay? Yes?
Accessory.
Yep.
Mitchell Croner, three Cannon Hill Road extension. As a real estate land use attorney, I was interested, so I started attending some of the zoning committee meetings with Jim, and Casey, and Sam, and the issue, I'm not gonna discuss it tonight, but detached in-law apartments, I think I've talked to some of you about it, so, it's something, I think the accessory bylaw we've come up with is good because it allows, as a matter of right, an attached in-law, and I think the next step is to address detached in-law apartments, people that have a detached garage or something like that. So, again, I don't wanna take a lot of time, please take a look at that, maybe we can address it briefly the next open meeting, or something, maybe I can come to the planning board. I know where Jim stands, so, like to hear what the other members have to say.
Jim wants to get the town meeting this year with...
Well, I know where you stand on detached.
Jim wants to give everybody a rest, that's what Jim wants to do, okay? I hate to tell you what I went through, unfortunately, last week, but I had a lot of people bugging the hell out of me, and my nephew had passed away, so, some of these things really got to me, and I don't wanna see this continue to happen, I don't. We got enough to do on this board, I can tell you right now. I mean, we're, we're, we've still got projects going on that started in 2013, they haven't finished up yet. We want them out of here. We're getting tired of them because we have to keep looking at them, and we've got other ones at this point coming on, all right? So, what we've got in total right now, I think is about 10 projects, and we haven't had that back up for a long, long time, and they don't build anything, 24 houses, they build eight. And there's a reason for eight, because they, if they go nine or 10, let me tell you, they're gonna end up donating the house. That's the Affordable Housing Act that we have in, in the bylaw. They are nice enough to give us $80,000 every time we do a subdivision, though. It still isn't spent, so, all right. I see Lisa back there, so, do you mind, at this point, that I cut into the planning board meeting and go on Bill's way, and then what I'm gonna do is, I may come back into this and, and take up the last two bylaw changes, which ought to go pretty quickly, all right? Lisa has to make a meeting in Topsfield tonight. Yeah, yeah. I, I, I don't know if I put somebody, I, you know what? I'll make a, I wrote all of this thing. I didn't make copies, that's the problem. What I may do- Yeah, yeah. You know what I'll do is, I'll, I'll make a copy of this, bring it over for rehab. Okay. Yeah, well. I do everything the old-fashioned way, still use a pen.
And use the pen, use the pen.
Okay, I wanna open the planning board meeting of 1/23/17 at 7:30 PM. The motion is seconded.
So motion.
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. I gotta find that, what do they do with it?
Mr. Chair, while you're passing those down, can I just say a couple of words about that? So, what the chair is passing you is the draft decision. As you know, the board essentially closed this out and approved it, but then there was an issue with the water and sewer review, so the water and sewer review happened, they were very efficient, they had some comments. You have a draft decision that incorporates the comments from the water and sewer peer review, which we're fine with. I reviewed the draft decision, and there's actually just two, two mistakes, Mr. Chair, and I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you the pages, but in paragraph thirty-three and thirty-four, and this is, this is all it is, it, Peter reversed the easement, so lots four and five on parcel B have a drainage easement, not a no-cut easement. That should be drainage on paragraph thirty-three. And then on thirty-four, where it says drain easement, it actually should be a no-cut easement. And so, I redraft, here's the page. So, paragraph thirty-three is supposed to be the drainage easement, and the no-cut easement is paragraph thirty-four. And that, and then otherwise, you're not bothering. Thank you. Otherwise-
Thank you.
The, the decision is in order, and the plan, it reflects what's on the plans. So again, in paragraph thirty-three, right now, in the second line, it says twenty-foot no-cut easement, and it actually should say drainage easement. And then in paragraph thirty-four, where it says drainage easement, it's actually supposed to be twenty-foot no-cut easement. And that's shown on the plans. And otherwise, everything that the board had talked about previously is in, is included, and we were fine with that.
All right with the water sewer?
Absolutely, yeah, we are fine with the water sewer, and that's now incorporated. Peter incorporates it in both paragraph thirty-five and in paragraph forty.
Right.
And then all the additional decis-, conditions you had last time, they're all incorporated also.
Okay.
Yep, and so we're fine with that.
Okay. So you'll have the deeds to land and all that drawn up?
Yep.
Okay.
If you, once you approve this memorandum of decision, then Bill will print it on the last page of the Mylar, and then we'll bring the Mylars in for signature. But we need you to approve the memorandum of decision.
Okay, we're gonna make a motion that we, we'll have to make some change, but, you know, we approve the MOD tonight. And, me and Peter have been working on this thing since the first of the year, so.
Is Peter, Peter's not here tonight?
He, he sent a memo, sent here somewhere, Wally, you know, that basically, he's okay with everything.
And this is our memorandum, right?
Yeah. Much paper, as usual. Peter, Peter wrote today, if you wanna read it into the record, with the inclusion of the additional conditions to cover the water and sewer development consultant review comments. I am okay with the final plans for Billis Way. Okay? All right. Okay, you guys read the whole thing by now?
I recognize some of the boilerplates.
Wally, I've been able to teach 'em. He'll slash copies.
And water sewer, this is theirs, that's good.
Yep.
I make a motion to accept the memorandum of change for Billis Way, with the changes that were presented as tonight.
Seconded as amended.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll get that filed with the, finalize it, file it, and we'll get it printed on the Mylar. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much for your interruption, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to the others.
And then everyone runs, yes.
Just as the, the other developers here, do you mind if I jump back at this point for one more of the zoning bylaw changes that we were discussing, okay? All right, then we'll, then we'll come up on the rest of it.
Accessory apartments and SD parks, so we just have to get through home occupation and dimensions.
That's on-
That's-
Okay, then the, the next one is customary home occupation. Casey Wellm, I'm a meter. What we used to have in this is, is just, it was a definition, if you go to the, even the new bylaw that we had come out with, it's a definition only, and what we decided to do was make the definition smaller, so it's gonna start with a new definition, but then create a real part of the bylaw for customary home occupations to ally in. Again, this, this was a lot of give and take and everything, it's probably more give than I ever did, but it, it, it allows a lot of different businesses that are home occupations today, to, they now exist in the town of Grovet and everything. And both the, the previous, I didn't mention that. Accessory apartments and the customary home occupations will be, if they, if the apartment's coming at nine hundred square feet, I'm just backing up on it at this point, the building inspector slash zoning enforcement official, as it is worded in section fourteen point one, I have to change some of these things. He's gonna take that. The zoning board's not gonna be doing it, as long as it meets what the bylaw says, he gets to issue the permit. He also gets to inspect everything, too. And we, we also have a permit application. I don't want that really in the bylaw, I'd want that on our website, because we never change the application, which we do from time to time. I don't wanna have to go through a town meeting to get a two-thirds vote to change an application. So, that's, that's one of the changes that, that, I'm just gonna go into that. Any questions on customary home occupations?
Everyone left.
No, they liked it. All right, it's going to two-six anyhow, so. More to roll, you mind if I do the last one? Okay, all right, there you go. This is section eight, density and dimensional regulations. Some typos in it here and there, but this was the rush at the end of last year to get everything into the new bylaw, that when you go into the notes, we still had the old RA, RB, and RC district, which morphed into R1, R2, R3. So we've gotta change those. There's a typo in the minimum side setbacks up on R2, and it's, it's really fifteen feet, and it's just footnote four. We lost a few things like, what was it called? I shouldn't know that one, that was always a fun one. The, oops, right here. Living bulk. We actually had some houses in town way back in the sixties, seventies, that were seven hundred and fifty square feet. We said, we wanted to see bigger houses built in a sense, and to try to get more taxes out of them and everything, because we were so skewed to the low end, and it wasn't even funny. So we came up with this living bulk, and it it did its trick, I mean, nobody knows anything, I swear, in this town, anymore, less than what, twenty-four hundred square feet. So, yet, everybody's crowing, you know, to get a $250,000 house built. You guys do that? No. It is a problem. But, you know, it's, again, it was, it was a little bit of give and take within the bylaw and everything, and it's come out a lot better than, than what we had, most of it is still the same, but we decided the easiest thing in the world to do with zoning laws is delete the whole thing and then replace it. It's, it's, when you start piecemealing things, everybody's going, "What are we doing?" So, all right. Okay, can, we'll carry it to two-six. Anybody have any questions on it? Everybody went home. Okay, all right, so what I need now is a vote to, to continue-
Are we gonna continue?
Continue the additions to the, and changes to the
So why can't we just-
zoning bylaw? To February sixth, 2018, at 7:30. And where that's kinda like our business meeting, we'll, we'll put it in that. Okay. All right, back to the planning board meeting. Did I get a vote on a-
Jim, just a question. Is it possible to, to have a, a motion and a vote to call the definitions and changes and everything, other than the rezoning complete? So that when you continue, we only have to bring that back up? And then therefore, this can go to the warrant as is?
Well, just in fairness, you know, I, I would, I would bring all of them back up, but, yeah, I-
Does anybody have any questions on the, on this section, definitions?
Wally, they all left.
They all left, so that's why-
Meeting's still here.
Jim Sheen's the only one that stayed.
Yeah, 'cause it's a two-point motion, as you know, one, one to accept the changes, and the second to make the recommendation to the selectmen to get it on the warrant. So if this is complete, then that just puts that over, and the zoning map change is gonna be a separate article anyway.
So you wanna accept the changes first, or what?
Yeah, 'cause we just, you just went through them, there's no, no one noted.
Okay, so you're making that motion?
I am.
Who's second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, to, we're gonna continue at the hearing to February sixth, 2018, at 7:30 PM. The motion is seconded.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, done. Okay. Back to the planning board meeting.
I'm gonna run while you're in the middle of the case. Feel better, Jim?
Okay, we have Nichols Village.
Steve Sawyer, Design Consultant, staying here with Nichols Village, I think at this point, we just give an update on, just for an update, the plans were updated and sent off to GZA, but the final, the last set of plans were just sent out yesterday, so they didn't have time to review and comment. We did meet with the Water Commission a few weeks back, they asked for their consultant environmental partners to do a peer review, which they have a signed contract, I believe it was the seventeenth, to perform that. The scope seems fine, it says overall review of the, the water and sewer systems. We did meet with the Fire Department, actually, we just met with them. As far as the site plan, it was just a minor, minor tweak to the plan that they requested that we'll provide also. There was a hydrant that the, that the ConCusick had asked we removed because of a dead-end water. It was a dead-end water pipe, and what we're gonna, the Fire Department wants it in place, so. Tom, he had said that we could probably work around it, which is a way we could continue a loop, maintain the hydrant, so we'll put that hydrant back in the plan.
Okay.
I think that's basically the status now. I feel confident that in, we should be able to work through it the next week with GZA, as far as their comments, I'm not sure, as far as environmental partners, with their schedule list, with the peer review. But based on the scope, I would think that we could turn it around in a week or two.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it, that's an update, I, we're hoping to be further along and be ready to close, but at this time, we don't, we need, we need additional four days.
Just, just an update, nothing else?
Yes, that's it.
Good.
Easy.
We need more of those.
And the only question is, when, when the, you know, we, we'd like to, I think we'd like to close things out at the next meeting, just wanna make sure we can take care of everything prior to that meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm, I guess I'm not sure what dates are available.
Yeah, before, before I forget, it's, since I put it on the, I forgot to tell Lisa. The plans, what we wanna get, I, I have to, another hearing for the change to subdivision rules and regulations, which isn't bad, it's hard to do, but we don't have to, we do have to advertise it, but on the plans, I'm gonna change the section in there, 'cause- 'cause when I went back and looked at that thing, I realized that, basically, we really need twelve sets of plans because there's many other different boards. We'll give them out, but what I need is six large and six small ones. Have you ever seen, the small ones are about, they're rectangle, about this long.
By seventeen?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause when they go to like fire, police, they more visualize it. They don't get into the detail. Planning gets into the detail, as does Concom, Electric Light, Water, Sewer. One to the building inspector and one to the road commissioner. So, the others will pass off to like Board of Health and Assessor. The town clerk gets one in case anybody wants to come in and view it. And she's better off with a smaller one, believe me.
Yeah.
She's got no room in there.
Section three, four, five in the reg, three point four-five, actually says twelve copies.
Well, I think I dropped off, the original submission I dropped off, I forget how many, I think it might have been.
Yeah.
A few copies. Now, as far as the updated plans, would you like, there has been, there have been some changes. Would you like these sets dropped off tomorrow?
Who's doing the review on this one?
Peter Williams.
Oh, Peter Williams has, he has a hard copy, he has a hard copy of the updated plans.
Okay.
I actually fed it to him.
On this particular one, who's submitting the letter to the departments for input under three, four, five? Is it Peter?
Well, Peter should be doing that, yes.
So, then all the copies should technically go to him?
I've been, you know, working with the two other engineers, Phil Henry and Peter Williams, as much as I can, you know, to get them to understand what their part is in this thing. And they both came back with the same comment, and we've known it for years. I mean, a lot of these departments don't do anything, don't come back and say anything.
I found out that, well, because the departments changed hands, I mean, we've been here a long time, you know, twenty-five, thirty years plus, but the, so we're well versed with it. But, you're right, other departments have changed hands, and we just heard from other departments that they didn't even know that was in there, even though it's been there since the late nineties, you know, when the changes went through for their input. And we found out that some of the boards, even though they got copies of the plans, didn't, you know, because they do change hands, and some people don't stay on the boards. The history, constitutional memory went out the window. So, you know, we have to always relearn and retrain. So, I think the engineer piece get, he should just put the cover letter in, just print out three, four, five. It's only two pages. Attach it to each one, put a little check mark. One goes to the police department, one goes to the conservation, one goes to the board of selectmen, et cetera. And then just have him distribute it for their input. The regulation even says what department is supposed to comment on.
Well, one of the things I'm trying to also do is I'm trying to get a copy of the subdivision rules and regs in Word. All we have is a PDF that's on the town.
That's it?
That's it. So, I put out, if you wanna call.
We have the original discs. We should have put it in Word.
No, if you'd like to call Woody.
And get those back.
And get that, you know, he's holding it hostage, okay?
Sure he's not, okay, I get it.
I did that a month ago, so, like, really, we should have that, you know?
You know, he might have handed that over a couple of times, and I think initially, so it got on the website. That's exactly how it got there. It got there on the disc.
I think he did.
Yeah, he handed it, three copies over. One went to Mayor McValley, one went to us, one went to the selectmen.
If you wanna, you know, you know, change that, which, you know, we can do at that point if it's in Word.
Yeah.
PDF, you need another program. Like, Bob O'Henry paid a thousand dollars for it, and now he's not even on the board. We can take a PDF and it pulls it, it makes it into Word and you can change it.
Yeah, you'd have to do a complete document change.
Yeah, exactly. I don't feel like typing that thing, okay? So.
I think parts of it will cut and paste.
All right, you got a job, you got a job.
All right, I'm on it.
I'll look into it, too. I'll ask Nancy. I remember Woody coming in the office, giving her a disc.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
So, all right. So, Peter, so to just clean that up, Peter's gonna get the copies. He's gonna attach the letter.
So, if we send that out, if we get that circulated this week, is still no, we're okay if we cross it, these dot the i's for February sixth with environmental partners and GZA?
Yeah. I wanna make sure.
All right, February, you know, February sixth, it's a board meeting, okay? But not for developers. The next one, what's two weeks later? We're thinking twentieth?
It's Tuesday, Tuesday of the school vacation week, which, you guys okay with that?
Nope, I won't be here.
Yeah.
I have kids in school.
You gotta change the date.
So, it'll be like the twenty-ninth, maybe, or the twenty?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
See if I can come up with a number here. February, so school, President's Day is the nineteenth. So, that'd be, that's that week, the twentieth, the twenty-second. Should be the following Tuesday, be the twenty-seventh. Tuesday the twenty-seventh.
Okay. Sorry, we're trying to do catch-ups.
Yeah.
And we're getting a little sick.
So, that should be plenty of time, though.
Yeah, I would think, yeah.
Yeah.
I would imagine that.
I think the reg is, what, thirty days or something for those departments? And even if they send a letter saying, hey, we need more time, we get it. We get something.
So, if, so we are in process of working with the water and sewer department. Does that mean that that process will impede the approval of the planning board? Or are we able to proceed and receive approvals from the planning boards, knowing that we're actually working with?
Depends on what the last changes, if they change your plans around, then you gotta resubmit the plans. That's the only thing with that. I would just carry on, see if you can get it.
I'll work. The only, the only change.
We got the water and sewer, right, the commissioner, right there. Let's see.
I think the only thing we left that we didn't discuss was that hydrant issue with GZA. Now, we're gonna stop that dead end.
Well, I actually thought about that. We could just tee off and run a four back, so it'd be a.
As it's not a dead end.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, just keep in mind, you got.
We can see the rest of that. We talked about flow rates and the rest of that.
Yeah, we did, we did.
So, you got eleven forty up to?
Yeah.
Ten forty.
Ten forty.
That's good.
All right, but just, now you have nine other departments to get input by by the end of the month. So, and someone just will say, hey, it looks good, but, you know.
What about with zero response, if they don't respond at all?
Well, if they don't respond within the timeline, I mean, it's, then it's accepted there. You know, I mean, there is a restricted timeline.
We would like to know that. We would like to know, who isn't responding, you know?
Yeah.
I actually pay him visits.
That's why, that's why with the submission of the plan, section three, four, five, which is only two pages, did that outlines each department. You'll see it. It actually has them all printed out. And then by each department, it actually has a sentence as to what they're supposed to comment on, okay? And if you just attach that, somebody checks the box, one goes to fire, one goes to police. You already got water involved, conservation, check it off so that each department knows it's them. You know, highlight it if you want. We need input on, and you're all set?
I'll work with Peter.
We're meeting on the, I believe it's the sixth. So, you guys have your plans updated and you can show me, show us what we're gonna do with the dead end and the rest of that, if we can get further along and.
Yeah. Sounds good.
And then if you don't get a response like the week before, the next, the twenty-seventh, so like the twentieth? Start making, start making calls, or Peter make the calls and find out what's going on? Because he'll be probably getting the feedback.
We'll pick him with the emails, right?
Yeah.
One other thing you wanna make you aware of is plan on talking to Concom as soon as you can on habitats on the land because what we're finding out is the town has been taken over by turtles. And if, I haven't seen one, I've been in tears since nineteen sixty full-time. I used to play in the woods from fifty-four to sixty. And I haven't found one yet, but they're all over the place.
Okay.
I've actually pulled a few up, Washington Street, you know, in the middle of the road, fairly good size. You know, you get a big shovel and get them off the road.
That's the problem.
Over down by Johnson's Pond area, so.
Is it a Landings turtle?
A Landings, yeah.
I have no idea. I'm not a turtle specialist.
Yeah, that just shut down a proposed gas station.
They have those estimated habitats, but they've never seen them, but they estimate they could be there.
They could be. We have a subdivision.
I can guarantee you, if you, if you go down Washington Street at that time of year, okay, you will see turtles this big trying to cross the road at like oh-six forty-five in the morning, so blocking traffic. And then King Street.
I can't tell you what's up there.
I don't think you will have any trouble with there.
I think, they're gonna climb.
No, I don't think so. They're not gonna climb that far.
There's a website, you can go and see, there's a map, you've seen that, probably.
They have load jackers on them.
We had one subdivision in South World.
I pulled off the road at this big thing with duct tape all over it. I was trying to figure out what the heck I was. Yeah, it was just holding up traffic, so.
We had, we had a subdivision in South World.
Saved the road.
It's one acre zoning. We ended up with about an acre and a half per house. And all of a sudden, they found an area, that kinda comes off a stream that's somewhat close, but it took out about one-third of the lots that went around one corner of it. And up had to come the monuments. That's these things, they're planted something like four feet in the ground, and they're stick up five feet with a plaque on them. And this is, they might wanna walk here. You know, so I have, I have to say this to the developers because it holds you up at the end. And in some cases, it's been a fine, which is really a donation to the national heritage. Some of these things go as much as ten thousand bucks. So, I'm letting people know as much as I can, check it out with the Concom first, and they'll tell you where they, they think habitats are, or they know habitats are.
And they should, they should have maps on that.
Oh, they have. They have a lot of information. They do have a lot.
We did it before, but I'm sure, sure there is.
Yeah, there's a website, he does.
There's a website, yeah.
And they go into Grove, and you'll see the different areas, they're shaded.
Bobby, you gotta start digging tunnels under all the roads.
Yeah, the Landings aren't the real, it's the wood turtle that's the endangered more.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Continuance to, you request twenty-seven?
Motion continue. To the twenty-seventh at eight o'clock?
All right.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one question on the approval that we're hoping for at some point. From that point, that's where I was drafting the opinion, writing the letter for the permit. Does that hold up the process in any way for us being able to start after those twenty days beyond the issuance of the permit? You know what I mean? Because.
You mean the appeal period?
If you approved it on the twenty-seventh, for example, and it was a period of time of twenty days, we have to draft this permit or the opinion on that, that could take longer than, longer than that period. Can we still start based on the issuance or the approval of the board? Or is there a period waiting for the written opinion to be published?
Why don't you go past the, well, the appeal period is supposed to go based on the written. Based on the approval, as you can see, we're punching these out fairly quickly.
You mean the M.O.D.?
Yeah, memorandum of decision.
We already started.
So.
What we're trying to plan for is just if we get an approval, the appeal period expires, and we have that, you know, that period of time.
You're free on your own, well, I mean, that's always been the case in Mass anyway. You're free to move on your own. You know, it's at your own risk if there's something different in there, but in my twenty-five years, we haven't, I think there's only one occasion I can think of that was a problem, but I'm not anticipating any. This is a pretty simple.
Who's writing the M.O.D. for this?
That's a good question, Bob. We're wondering the same thing.
Yeah.
No, no, we, we.
Is this Peter, right?
We, yeah, no, in this case, it's Peter.
Then have him write it for the meeting.
And we already have the boilerplate, so that's.
He has, yeah, he has basically a thing where he can go in, and then he needs dates. He'll get dates from me and everything.
Yeah.
Sometimes he has them, sometimes he doesn't.
That's what you're looking at, right?
But what I'm saying, he can write it for the meeting.
Yeah, we do it.
What kind of work, we talking like site work, talking surveying, or what?
Just anything, just, yeah, site work starting to.
It's the middle of winter.
Part of the land clearing, the first piece, the.
The what?
Land clearing, tree removal, that kind of stuff.
When do you?
He bails.
Yeah, they can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can write the M.O.D. can be written for the meeting.
And if there's any, if there's ever a question, you can ask, just ask the board.
The M.O.D. can be ready for the meeting.
Your board, we wanna start doing trees on day twenty-two, is that okay?
Yeah.
I would do it that way, just like, it's so simple. That way, we know what you're doing, and you know what you're doing, and if somebody has a question, you get the.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for.
You get the letter.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
So, you can have it written for the meeting, perhaps?
It'll be close.
It'll be, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause if there's minor changes, it'll take a week, but, but once you go past that, we'll have the meeting, close it out, then the twenty-one day cycle starts. So, I'm, this'll be written by then, but.
Sounds good.
But if you're just doing tree work and other stuff, I don't, I personally don't see a problem with it, but you guys. Going through, but, but yeah, if you wanna make it tidy, just submit a letter, hey, dear board, we're gonna be doing tree work, this work, this work, this'll start on this date, and we, it'll take a month, you know, till we get to this phase or something like that, and we'll, you know, vote it in.
All right.
You know, based on what it says, but, yeah, there's only one subdivision I've seen in twenty-five years that ever was a problem. And it wasn't yours, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Atwood Estates. Uh, let's see, how much money do we need?
Just full sets of plans for anybody that wants them.
Never ask that question again. What'd you name the street, by the way?
We're told that you have listed names that we're supposed to use. We do not know what the names are.
Yeah, there was a street list name that's on the.
Well, I think there's, there is a list of streets, right?
Yeah.
Named after veterans, maybe? I don't know, most of them.
Oh, yeah.
Something like that.
Did it increase now, though? We had one the kids did a long time ago.
Yeah.
They can pick what they want, we have to approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, we just have to.
Yeah.
There's nothing wrong with veterans.
Yeah, and just give us the list, and we'll.
Yeah.
No, no, you can pick a name, but we have to approve it, too. But there is a list. You should use the list if you got one. I don't know where it is.
I have, yeah.
What's the name, Denise probably got it.
About Sesame Street. There isn't one in town. That's what it is. We have to check for duplication.
Wasn't this an old carriage, stationing area or something in that land? Remember that divot, and there was an old structure there?
Somebody suggested that. We can't find it. That was nothing, yeah.
One of the babies said that.
I don't know, somebody said, you know, it was way back in Stagecoach days. It was used as a.
It was made out of concrete.
Okay, so it's not concrete.
Blocks, wasn't it?
Blocks, all right, so that wasn't, was it back then? Okay, but the Stagecoach went through there, right? That area, isn't Center Street the longest?
Oh, Center Street is the longest street, yes, definitely.
Is it definitely the Stagecoach Road itself? Something along that theme, historic in the area? You guys pick it, will you approve it?
Well, if you can't find the list, we'll just, we'll look at your list.
Look at Stagecoach Road.
We don't have.
I don't think, I don't think we even have a.
You have to pick it, but we have to check it for duplication.
Yeah.
Because we don't want, like, another Abbott Street.
Yeah.
Right.
I don't think we have a Stagecoach Road.
Okay, then we need another one?
No, we don't.
Right, or is it gonna be one? They can't do that.
It's all one.
What's that?
Be one, going in, just, yeah, just one street.
They can't use Pecker Lane.
Pecker Lane?
Yes.
There's a Pecker Way in Haverhill. Yeah. Okay, we did send out letters to all the departments.
Yeah, I heard that, yep.
With plans. And just got a copy from Jim, from the police department, and they were concerned a little bit with the being able to see.
Yes.
And as we've mentioned before, we've discussed with Bob, part of the project is to lower that road and flatten out the curve. So I think we've addressed that.
Jim, did you talk to Dwight? Because I talked to him and then I talked to the chief.
I have a conversation.
Okay, so it was just Dwight and then, I called him yesterday just to see what the inputs were.
Now, another one from the light department and we have dealt with Mr. Snow on this. Says relocate the conduits on the east side of the entry road, which we did, that's on these plans that you have here. And then he had four other notes, which you've actually put on the utility plan, so he wants a pole reset and some other things done. But we actually put those notes on the utility plan exactly as he gave them to us.
And we're all underground inside anyway.
Yeah.
Right.
So you got that on the plan already?
Yeah. I don't.
What'd he pick for streetlights? The dark sky?
That I don't know. Just as a note on the plan, again, the streetlights will be in accordance with the light department and the planning board.
I see, ready, yeah, that's.
I don't understand this from conservation, it's the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, that got stuck in the box evidently yesterday.
It appears the property will require filing with conservation due to various resource areas.
No, they were looking at, I saw the, I was watching the meeting. Two pieces of property, two lots. So it's not the whole subdivision. It was two lots, the first two lots coming in, I guess you got grave arrangements on it, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we do.
Yes, and that's, you have to file them separately when you go get a permit for that lot, that's what they, that's what they're looking for.
But it's got nothing to do with.
Okay, no problem. I'm just, I'm just telling you what I saw on the meeting the other night, so.
They reference resource areas, there aren't any on the property.
That's what I thought, yes.
Yeah, I don't know what that's about.
Maybe they meant either.
They said we should check with natural heritage and we've done that.
Yep.
And there's no rare endangered species shown, right?
She's getting a writing.
You don't need, it's on the website.
Yeah, she's on their website, that's.
All right, you can print it out.
They made it easy now.
Well, we did, that was part of our original application.
Email attachment, this gal, Rosemary?
I don't know.
Call her, give her an email.
Believe me, I just, I'm tired of dealing with people that don't know what they're talking about after all these years. It gets pretty frustrating. The applicant will need to submit additional information on stormwater. No, we won't. We already did that, we already dealt with Phil Henry on all the stormwater issues and conservation's got nothing to do with this project. So I don't have to submit anything to him. And the applicant will need to provide information on erosion control. They apparently didn't look at the plan because we have an entire sheet on erosion control, so.
So who's fielding that for us, Jim? Is that gonna be Peter? Because technically, that's addressed in the board, right?
This is Phil Henry.
Oh, Phil Henry?
Phil Henry sent an email to Jim that everything's fine, the plan's done.
So what, if Phil's gonna be the engineer, you know, addressing, that was my question before, as to, you know, who's pointing contact on this? So just have Henry send an email to Concom answering that? Because he's a consultant for the planning board and he can say that.
But Phil already, if Phil sends an email to them and tells them they're out of line, that's fine. But Phil has already said in meetings here and in what he's written up.
Right.
That there aren't any wetlands on site, he's already said that.
Don't disagree. So let's have Phil write to the Concom and say, we have reviewed this, we see the stormwater, everything is on the plan, it's on sheet two, if you have questions, contact me. Okay?
And nothing will be filed with the conservation commission.
If that's, what, Phil figured that out?
No, he's already figured that out, I'm telling you.
Okay, so find out, why would they send a letter like that if they?
Because they don't know what they're doing.
They have a new chairman.
They have a new chairman and they met late too, they met before.
Oh, so, okay, so that's easy to fix. So let Phil handle that, okay? And just address that and say, your concerns are either not necessary or already been taken care of and what else, you know, hopefully that'll be it. But if they send, you know, we're just trying to, you don't want them to appeal the process because they think there's something required that's not required, so let's have Phil take care of that.
You're right about that, it's just pretty frustrating to get this, a project we've been working on since last spring.
I don't disagree. And this is exactly what I was talking about, where we have new people in, the constitutional members gone and then some of that stuff.
Now, we've also added a looped water system, which is required by the water department, so it loops back on Center Street.
Okay.
And I've dealt with fire department on where they wanted the hydrants, they had us move around, but now where they want it to be, got confirmatory emails from the fire chief. That where they are in the plan is okay.
Alright.
And street numbers will not be assigned until the subdivision's approved.
Yeah.
Then the assessor assigns the street number. So we can't get that done until the subdivision's approved.
So this, this draft that I'm looking at, Phil did this?
Yep.
Okay, so Phil did this, but he didn't have those?
He did.
Oh, he did?
They're just paper copies if you want, need it in the night.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
I think I'll take one.
Site distance is taken care of?
Yeah.
That was the only other concern?
That's all we got so far.
Do we have a note from Phil that says, okay to go?
Let me read.
Except for housekeeping items, yeah.
Hi, Jim. I have not seen these, this is the plans, but they appear to be substantially similar to the previous plans I received. Preparing the M O D that I had forwarded to you yesterday, appears that the planning board requires the conditions to be included in the recorded plan. So as a matter of process efficiency, the applicant should probably hold off on printing mylaws, but I'll defer to you. Also, the plan should be stamped by registered P and P L S.
Yeah, I had sent Jim the PDFs and I said, you know, we'll bring the mylaws to the meeting. Then in the meantime, after we had the mylaws already printed up, Phil suggested not doing it. Yeah, the plans are stamped by P D and R L Rs.
So, alright, so where are we, just for point of order, so we're at the point of closing everything out, we're going through approval, it just seems like, because we got a couple of housekeeping items? Is that, everybody's feeling on that?
I don't know what housekeeping items you have.
The conditions on the mylaws.
The condition, okay, yeah.
I consider that housekeeping, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Does that, everybody else feel that way on that? Jim?
Yeah, I don't have any problems.
Can we get a copy of the conditions so we can put them on the mylaw? How do you do that?
It's in the, actually, Phil should have it because he's got them on the boilerplate here for the draft.
Yeah, I'm from Phil.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing that isn't in there and I just, I have to go through it is the road, what was gonna be done in the road, so that should go in here.
Yeah.
He may not be aware of that, but that was between you and Bobby.
No, we did discuss it with Phil, but you're right, it should be in the decision that we'll work with the highway department to lower the road and flatten it.
And then a street name if you go with Stagecoach.
Yeah, that's fine, Stagecoach.
Well, if people write and they don't wanna write Stagecoach.
Hey, I write Rocky Woods.
Well, it was Rocky Woods.
It still is. Put a shovel in there, man, it's like a wood.
Stage?
I want stage. Stage draft?
I don't know, stage sounds, it's got a nice ring to it, we don't have a single.
We actually have two streets, so one could be stage.
You like. There's two streets in there.
Technically.
That's an old Hable name.
What's that?
Atwood.
Atwood?
Yeah. I don't think, we don't have an Atwood.
Alright, Atwood, that's it.
Well, there goes my historic name.
Well, Atwood's historic.
Yeah, they were the owners of the land.
They were the owners of Atwood.
Oh, they were, so that's a good one to do.
Alright, so that follows.
Technically, we need two, don't we?
Let's see.
That's where the police and fire come in. As to how many street names you want, that's the nine-one-one system, yeah.
Yeah, nine-one-one officer was shocked, I was asking him for addresses.
Yeah, but you come in.
You only have one main drag.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not, they're connected.
They're connected and they get all the numbers, so you'll be fine.
Yeah, I think.
Just go with one, because they're gonna get too confused.
Atwood Road? Atwood Way?
Atwood Way, maybe.
Atwood Way, alright, we all agree.
Atwood Drive, Atwood Way.
Well, I usually know the people named after their kids.
Atwood Lane. I don't know.
Oh, yeah, we got one.
You have a lot of those.
Two, two, um, well.
Yeah, Atwood Lane's not bad.
Guy and his wife, Doris and Wilbur.
Yeah, Atwood Lane.
That was bigger than ninety's.
It is really a lane anyway.
That's a seven hundred fifty's carport.
It's narrow, right? It doesn't go anywhere. Atwood Lane's not bad.
In the basement, he pulled up the kitchen floor.
Yeah, that was big in the nineties, naming after them.
They were World War II houses, you know.
Marshawn Lane and.
Yep.
Yeah, one, one street.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So that's gonna be twenty, so how about you get back to Phil with that stuff? We fly motion to approve the subdivision with the last engineering letter as amended, because he's gonna put the conditions on. And then, once that's completed, he's signing them. So.
Okay.
So that's at the next meeting?
Yeah, because he's gonna have everything on, he's gonna do it on the twenty-seventh, so.
People revise the bylaw and they have to.
And then he's gonna print the original, ready to go, so the draft, so. So motion to approve Atwood Estates slash Atwood Lane subdivision, okay? With the conditions of the final consulting engineer, housekeeping items.
Second it.
Call a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
How did you loop the water?
Oh, it.
Did you go in here?
Just down here.
Oh, you came out?
Oh, you came out and crossed country, oh, okay, alright.
Yeah, they, we couldn't get it down back because nobody had any rights to hurry. Lane of court.
They went cross country, alright, I just was wondering, it's nothing.
And this, you know, that realignment for the road is actually shown there.
Yeah.
See, the existing ways out here.
Yep.
And it's realigned back in here.
Yeah, we'll put that in, you're gonna tell, will you tell Phil Henry to put that in?
As part of the decision.
The M O D?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna tell him?
Yeah, I will.
You know, if you had two names there, if you, the top road there.
Yeah.
People would never find your house.
That's what it is. And we have, we have that situation in town, that's a, right.
Matter of fact, some of that stuff had to be straightened out along with all the numbers when we went through the nine-one-one system, that was a big, a big push.
No, you're right, one name.
Okay.
And that's a good, they're the original owners, so that's old.
How far back does that go?
At least mid eighteen hundreds might be before that.
Oh, wow.
It was bad, yeah.
Yeah.
That's historic. There you go.
Yeah.
Alright, gentlemen.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys wanna go over this map change?
Well, that was that from, that's their.
That's Estes Way.
Yeah.
From them, from, that's not our thing.
Yeah, they wanna, what's the difference between the two?
Well, he wants the, they were, Jim and Sam were proposing changing to business zone.
Yeah.
But they wanna change it to limited business, but.
But some of the limited businesses are fast food restaurant, and then there's also a recreational center, but, I mean, over the period of time, he's been talking about boat storage, he's been talking about RV storage.
Doesn't each one require a?
Well, he needs to do a site, what he really needs to do is, in my estimate, is a site plan, tell us where he's gonna put here, there and everywhere. He doesn't have to do an absolute good job with the site plan, but enough to give us an idea where things might be located.
So, just so I'm clear, once upon a time, we proposed a gigantic change to the Center Street land, which the town now owns. And one of the reasons that we were changing that out of the industrial zone was to do the overlay district, which, in it, so that you could have this parcel that was, you know, Center Street was over two hundred and thirty acres, but. But in it, you could do like, like the Brooksby Village type thing and the Fields and all this other stuff. So it came under it, but you would still do the overlay district, so each individual item would require a permit of its own within the zone.
Well, they do, they, you know, a lot of these things, they're gonna have to go special permit, you know? I mean, one of the things that bothers me is, like, I mean, they were literally harassing the hell out of me with this thing, you know, here my nephew had passed away and, you know, it, his wife's had a problem with it and all, which you can understand. But her sisters took it over and we ended up doing a whole thing over in Billerica where they originally came from, but all his friends were over here in Roland Merrimack. You know, he went to school at Penn Tucket and everything else. It kinda blew a whole ten days away from me because they had to keep him literally on ice that period of time, you know, before they could do burial and all. So it was like each damn day was a different, where are we, where are we, where are we going, what are we doing? You know? And I'm getting these, these phone calls, you know, leaving messages, emails, even Ogden's kid got involved in it. You know, it got to the point where I was ready to go take a trip, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so what's so different between what they're proposing to what we're proposing is what I'm talking about?
It is, it is, I mean, limited business, it's not, limited business was created just to sell the damn old town hall, which I didn't really wanna do that at the time. And, you know, I gave up two days of going to Florida that, that week I had to do it.
So what?
And no business ever came into that area, into that town hall.
Yeah.
And that was the, that was the whole thing, they held up the sale of it, they had one buyer, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Well, that was a while back, so.
Oh, yeah, tell me it's worth twenty times that now.
Okay, so who proposed the original change? I see their proposal.
Me, me.
Okay, for this particular section.
It's real easy to do because for the simple reason, you just add another thing into the business part of the bylaw, in the description.
Right.
Now, it's just the yard as you know the yard, it isn't the six acres on the other side of the B and M railroad tracks, Massacre, whatever you wanna call it.
Is this part of the parcel?
What?
The six acres.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's, it's, is it connected? It's not connected because of the railroad tracks.
Okay, so he's been going through for the track?
Yeah, he has a right to pass and repass.
Okay, so, but it's part of the giant parcel? How many acres is it, seventy?
Twenty-six, I believe, would be.
Twenty-six, okay. So we get twenty-six acre parcel on that, so we wrote the language for the initial change to put it into the limited, into the limited business.
No, we wrote the change to put it into business.
Alright, so why not the business, can't we, you can still have an overlay in the business section, can't?
What you really should do, because the, each, each one of the business, oh, where the hell, where'd it go, where'd it go? Everything disappears.
Make a thirteen acres, or there must be another one.
Still have the bylaw right now, it had it.
Yeah, he said the six on the other side, so that wouldn't bring it.
Alright.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Basically, if you go into, what is it? Let me give you this section, I'll just kinda, it's like, business district is three point three point four, okay?
Yeah.
Then each, each part of the business, we have right now three point three four one, four two, four three.
Right.
This new one is four four.
Four, got it.
Okay? Because they're laid out with that, what you could do very simply is, you have another little line going next to the three three four one, and you would call that B one.
Yeah.
B two, next one, B two, B three, and him, he would be B four.
Got it.
Okay? And you, you know, put that on your maps, okay?
Okay, yeah, so it goes under the zoning map or its own reg and its own.
But then what happens is, when you get into the matrix.
Right.
Okay? And one of the things I wanted to do with matrix, if you, which is four point five.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, yeah.
When you got residential, community facilities, agriculture, that should be kinda like one part of that, okay, which would be, without screwing this whole thing up, fairly well. When you go to the business end of it, okay, they're, they're in there too.
Yeah, see this?
If you had all the business industrial, okay, separated from all this, because when you look at business industrial, you still got the R one, R two, R three, but there's residential and they're all NPs.
Alright, so let's.
And a lot of people can't understand that, why can't you have a business or an industry in a residential area?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, so, so I'm just looking at thirty years from now. Okay?
That won't be alive.
When, when, when we're, hopefully, unless they're on the board in thirty years from now, but anyway, so the future residents of Groveland can be looking at this and go through. When, when, when we're, hopefully, hopefully unless they're on the board in thirty years, but anyway, uh, so, the future residents of Groveland can be looking at this and go through. Because this particular parcel has got so many, it's multi-use right now, it's got so many things in it, onto that, uh, you know, like you said, we get the storage, we've got.
It's not organized by use either, they're all over the place.
Right, so, so each, I, I suppose, here's one thought, is to get the entire parcel in its own, whatever we're gonna call it, so, um, either business, the business zone. And then, because on this particular, on the right side is storage, but that could change to the left side. I mean, you could just pick that up and put something up on the, on the other side, so you, you couldn't really section this giant lot out for storage over here, or business over here, but then something else over there and.
Well, you do it through the uses in the matrix.
Right, but the whole parcel.
But you gotta, you gotta come out with, you know, B one, B two, B three, B four.
I, I gotcha, but in order to do that, we, we have to include the entire parcel that he has, because he could do anything. So if you, if you cut off that section across the tracks, okay, that could be something completely different. So because this parcel is multi-use, and each does require a special permit, so that's where we'll know what's going where. Perhaps the whole parcel should be included, because we don't know what's gonna be there in ten years, could be something over there.
No, and I, I even told them, I, I'm not, I'm not offended by, if you wanna put the parcel in now, we can redo that.
Right.
Okay, I can, I can, I can put that into that.
Uh-huh.
But where the work comes in this, okay, is, I can, if I separate the zones, and I gotta, I gotta do the matrix, that's gonna take time.
So we don't do that on separating the zones for the matrix on this round, we just break this parcel off and call it the business district?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it's gonna.
Yeah, but, but let's include the whole parcel, because.
And that's, that's fine, I can do that tomorrow.
Yeah, so, so let's include the whole parcel to wherever this sucker goes, because we don't know what's gonna be there, and he's got a special permit, and he could put something over there by the tracks and, I don't know. Maybe it'd be another solar field.
What I really, yeah, what I really wanna see is, I mean, is, is, again, is a site plan for this whole thing, what, where might you put what?
Well, that's a dart.
It, it might be a little dark, but, you know, I know, I think, I'll be honest with you, I think he's got it all figured out.
Well, okay.
Now, some of it, you may not want in certain areas there, especially near Whorf Lane.
Yeah.
Whorf Drive. I mean, that, that was the whole thing where we were trying to get, you know, we covered the fence with the green tart.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we had earthen stuff, we had trees growing.
But you know what, that, that's what I mean, I mean, that could be temporary stuff, you, you know, the storage, the storage that's there now may not be there in ten years, and some other type of use may come up into that area.
Exactly.
That we don't know, so, so each particular, I, I would say at this point, each particular structure going up is gonna require its own, unless it's the same, would require its own special permit for the use.
Mm-hmm.
So, so let's.
Well, you know, if you go down just B, the column B, you'll find some permitted, okay?
Right, yeah, I saw that.
You, you can get it, but a lot of it is still special permit.
Right, but let, let's say.
It's a, it's a harder business, is, is what it is, it's sometimes, some of these businesses don't fit in some of these zones.
That's right, so, so let's say, just a hypothetical here, because then everything's changed on like computers by the, seems like by the minute. So let's say the storage facility that's over here now, wherever that is, in ten years now becomes the, the new assembly section for, uh, solar panels in Groveland, because somebody wants to do it, okay, well, the, the structure may modify a little bit, okay, but so is the use, because now we're just going to, um, light assembly. And it's not storage anymore, so that's gonna require another special permit.
Again, we don't, we don't really allow manufacturing in the business area, I mean, we do have a huge industrial area for those purposes, which.
So light assembly, light assembly is allowed?
He has a lot of plants, he has about, what, five, five, six buildings up there.
Right, so, so again, so then that raises the next question, so, under, for instance, light assembly, not requiring oils and motors and, you know, all these stuff in the industrial section, light assembly like plug stuff in to assemble, that should be allowed in the business district, but it's still gonna require a special permit?
Yes, now, we've tried talking, you know, I, I, I used to go to a, a lot of the Board of Appeals meetings, you know, on their side in a sense. And I, you know, we had a lot of problems, you know, in the beginning, it's not that problem anymore in the Board of Appeals. The only thing that you have to hit is walks like, talks like.
Yeah.
Now, a lot of the things that we came up with what's allowed, the types of businesses, they're businesses that when you read the description of it, and then you go in and you get the definition as well, it, it, it can be different things.
Yeah.
Okay, the interpretation of the word can be different.
Mm-hmm.
So that you could, you know, if it might be one thing for this, it also fits something else. And, you know, so it allows them at that point to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And there were a lot of things that they got turned down on.
Did he only burn one tape?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the second one.
Yeah, that's the second side.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I was not thinking, I mean, so, a lot, a lot of the things that they were, they were talking about was, you know, to me, it just fits storage, okay? If you're gonna store a recreational vehicle there, a camper, a boat, I mean, a lot of people thought what he was gonna do initially was build boat storage racks.
Yeah.
You know, and that, he, he never really did bring that idea up whatsoever at all, but if you think about it, they don't make any noise. Maybe they look a little ugly stuck up in the air, you know, but they're not noisy or anything like that, they're just there, they're stored. And, you know, I, I had no problem with that, but that took a quick death, every one of those things initially.
Yeah, see, that, that's why I, I think this whole parcel needs to be lassoed and pulled in under this, and then anything that goes in there just needs a special permit, unless it's a, like you said, it's in the matrix, that's there already, 'cause I, I see over time, um, the buildings or the structures or, or even what's going in there, you know, future technology is gonna take over, a future use, you know, what, what's, what we need today, we may not need in fifteen years, something else is gonna come up.
A lot of the buildings.
So let's not leave this thing to question, as to, let's capture all of this parcel, so that it all has to come under.
Okay.
And if it, if it fits the matrix of the time, and of course, this will update itself anyway.
But, but, can I get a consensus of the board is to keep it into a, put it into a business zone, not a limited business zone?
Yeah.
Because I, I think, you know, this, this, this will support itself over a period of time.
I, I think the business zone is fine, and, and then the, the matrix kicks in, I'm, I'm not sure what benefits a limited business would be.
Yeah, I can't figure that out.
If it's special permit, um, you know, and then if he wants to bust off a piece for, I don't know.
I think, I think what he, I think what he fears most of all is I drop dead within a couple of weeks, and, and I'm not around to create it. It, it doesn't take that long for me to create stuff, it doesn't. But what I gotta do is, I, I wanna get past these things.
Yeah.
I, I do wanna make sure that when we go to town meeting, there's not gonna be a whole lot of questions there, we're gonna pass.
Zoning changes are the most complex, I mean, look how, how many years we tried to get center street rezoned.
Yeah, I mean, when's the last time we did a rezoning, it was in the seventies.
It was like thousands of years ago.
Who, who wrote those bylaws, me, okay?
Yeah, followed in your footsteps later in the nineties.
Yeah, it's, it, it's like, you know, you, you have to understand, it takes time to do it, that's all, but will I have that done by town meeting? Probably not right now, with, with everything else hidden.
Yeah, let's just put it into the business and, and then get that, and get that lassoed and the change done, and then everything else that's not by use.
One of the things that you can do, okay, well, is simply, you, you take this thing that they gave us.
Yeah.
Under advisement.
Yeah, I think.
Which means, you don't do anything, and then you put it, you, you go into the, you go into the town meeting, that's all, you know, with what you wanna do. But they, we'll tell them that.
Yeah, we, we have to.
But, you know, we have to make them, get this fear out of them at this point, I, I have a feeling you think, you know, well, it won't get done. Well, it will get done, even when the, when I was, the last meeting we had with the zoning board members and the building inspector in December, mid-December, they were kinda looking at me like, well, how are we gonna do all these things, you know, because these zones, these, these actual zones are very different, you know, where, where the land lies, and I said, well, you gotta split them up into B one, two, three, four, you should've seen the faces. It, it, it came on like, oh, we can do that? Yes, we can do that, guess who first proposed that, back in nineteen eighty? Me.
There you go.
You know what happened?
Oh.
You know, the selectman, Earl Sweetser, came upstairs, uh, into the planning board room at the time, and he said, gentlemen, I think we've seen enough with zoning, which meant no more articles. But had that been done back then, you wouldn't be looking at this now.
Hmm.
You just wouldn't.
Well, that was, that was a while back, so, um, I don't know what, I'm trying to figure out their, it'd be nice to get them in here, um, at that next meeting.
Oh, they'll come, they will be here.
Yeah.
They will.
Just to find out what the, because under the business district, if we lasso the whole property, then special permit will dictate.
Well, they wanted to do that, okay, when, when we, when we last discussed it with them.
Yeah.
At, at a meeting of the, me, the planning board member, the two zoning board members, and the building inspector, they wanted to do that.
Yeah.
And I said, well, we will do that.
Yeah.
You know, not necessarily right now, but I could see in some of the zoning board members' faces, they didn't really wanna do that right then. And I think they still don't.
If, if you don't, it's a wild card.
I know it's a wild, well, no, it's still residential, that's always a separate lot, nothing more. I think Hobart at one point in time may have owned that electric substation.
Yeah.
And I know he owned the lot out front, that's a house on that now.
Yeah.
'Cause that was empty, at one point, and Bobby will back me up, he had a chance to buy Whorf Drive and Whorf Lane.
Yeah.
And he didn't.
Okay.
But I can tell you right now, Hobart was a lot easier to deal with, believe it or not, than Eric. Eric's getting, he's playing hardball, and he's being stupid is what he is, and I think he's just gonna back off and, and trust the planning board at this point. We'll get there, I'll get them there, I can probably have that article, we won't get it in in time, that's the problem.
With just by adding in the dimension?
Huh?
Just by changing the dimension?
No, that, that I can do very quickly, that, that's, that's already, that's what it wrote up.
That should already.
Yeah, that's, that's nothing, that's nothing.
So let's include the parcel, and then the, your, your writing of the, the subsets, um, to, for the matrix that can come into fall.
Well, here's the problem, if you've noticed, they're not doing any special town meetings anymore.
Yeah, I did notice that.
They do one before the annual.
Yeah.
I think they've got a better hold on the finances of this town, you know, over a period of years now.
Well, we get, you know.
But that hurts us, if we wanted to keep changing something and, and something was, you know, definitions.
You can, I know they wouldn't wanna go through the whole expense, but you can do it, you can do a limited, we've done that before, if you had to do something that came up, people would just tag on to it, hey, we got a special coming, is anybody having?
That's why they're not doing it anymore, because of the process.
Why can't we change that, though, that's not too bad to.
I know, that's, that's what I would do first, is just include that parcel, so we have one.
Well, yeah, I, I can do that in, in, in an hour.
Okay, so that's.
Okay, I can do that in an hour.
It's better to leave it in the business.
You wanna, you wanna make a motion on that to include the parcel, just to get it on the record, and then that's done, and then, um, and then the matrix will, will have to, you know, come at a different time, or, I don't, it's not really gonna matter, because they're still getting a special permit anyway.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it really doesn't matter.
Anything, just a vote.
Okay, give me a, give me a vote, we'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, alright, that'll get done. I'll send, as soon as it gets done, I'll send you a copy of the article, that's all, you know, but, you know, what I, what I have to do is I gotta, I gotta put all these other ones in the article form. They are before town council right now, so he peruses them.
Yeah.
Now, some of the stuff we're changing.
Yeah.
He had been in on changing before, and, you know, Lisa Mead, she had changed some things before. So literally, right now, we're doing a third change on some of this stuff.
Yeah, it was bad, how many times do we, I, I mean, I can tell you from, from our experience, when we rewrote the subdivision control law, we thought it was the greatest piece of legislation written in the town of Groveland in nineteen ninety-seven, and you know what? It wasn't six months before we had our first change, because, uh, we had to tweak a couple things, 'cause some holes came up.
Yeah.
And, uh, on, on through, so it always looks good, and then stuff comes in and you gotta change it or tweak it, or.
Believe me.
That's why it's a living document.
You, you, you got me as the zoning board person who was visiting the planning board, I don't know if you remember, you were working on the master plan.
Yeah.
Remember the hole in the donut guy that used to show up once a month, and I, I'd sit there and I was getting bored out of my mind. I was there to tell you guys, we gotta do something with the zoning law, because on, on the zoning board, we couldn't handle anything. It, it was that extinct, and yet, in nineteen ninety-five, believe that's when they first started showing up, it was twenty years of age at that point. These things, you know, I hate to say it, they, they just go out of style, that's all, or go out of whack.
That's why they're supposed to be living documents that get little changes along the way, so, what else we got on the, on the tag tonight, is that it?
Well, nothing else, you know, let's go home.
Alright, motion adjourned.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Alright, thank you for watching, have a great evening.